I'm looking for it.
We do.
But just one of my...
Fair enough.
To a call, you don't have to have a CDL.
So any of your...
Okay, I want to call the meeting to order, please. September 20th meeting of the New Hampshire Board of Selectmen. We will start the meeting with public comment. If anybody has a comment they'd like to make, they can raise their hand. I'll recognize you. Come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have three or four minutes to place your comment. Not a lot of public people here today, so we'll just move down the agenda to Dr. James Morse, Oyster River Superintendent. How are you, sir?
Very good. So thank you as always, and give me a little bit of time. I'll try to keep it brief, and we'll try to keep Scott away from the napkins where Scott's playing around with the tax impacts and all of that, because we're not even going to talk about money tonight. First of all, I do want to say some kind things about the fire department and the police department and their support of our Masway School. They have been incredibly attentive to the school as we opened up. I think probably every officer was on site, and the fire department was there. And it's always, you know, it's one of those things you look forward to at the opening of school. We've seen the police and fire at the Masway School, and it's pretty impressive, so I want to thank them publicly. And then, just tonight, I wanted to give you just a few updates. Obviously, the big news in the district is the construction of the new middle school. And one of the things that we were trying to achieve with the new school was net zero. And what that means is the school will produce about the same amount of power as it uses. So the roof has solar panels, and we're building a solar canopy over the parking lot, and it has just a lot of super cool energy features embedded. The thing that actually happened, though, is we ended up with net positive, which means that the building will produce more power than it uses. For the first seven years, our taxpayers don't benefit, because we are doing it through a lease arrangement and an investment arrangement. But in the seventh year, the school district will buy out that arrangement. The net result will be that the taxpayers in our district over the next 20 years will save $2 million in energy use, which is a direct impact, obviously, to our taxpayers. So the investment in the school is actually going to be an incredible payback, not just for the students, but for the towns that supported it. So it's about 76% complete, and our children will move from the old school to the new school in February, during February break. And then we'll tear down the old school and build the field area. So by the time we open again in August, the entire project will be done. So we're pretty excited by that. And I just thought there, I know Scott was heavily involved in being a participant on the planning committee and has taken a very personal interest in it, and I know you guys have stopped by and seen the project go up. Can I answer any questions for the three of you on the middle school?
No, I'm just very, I mean, to walk through that school and go up the four flights also is really, really very interesting. It's amazing, really, especially when you look at the energy recovery system, the piping, the plumbing. It's just amazing.
Kind of a piece of art.
It's really, it's really something to see.
So everybody who's come through, we've had many, many visitors now, have been impressed. We've had architect groups come through. We've had superintendent groups come through. Obviously, we've had community groups come through, and everybody who's impressed with how the building was designed and the geothermal heating cooling system. So I'm really excited about the kids being able to be shipping over there mid-year and excited about seeing the project come to a conclusion in August. So the next thing I just wanted to touch base with you, these enrollment numbers that I share with you are, you know, not official yet, but one of the great concerns we had over the course of last year, this summer, was, once we opened school for children again, would they return? And indeed, they did. So right now, the Masway School is at 327. This would be as the opening of school, I shouldn't say right now. On October 1st, the official numbers will come out. Masway's at 327 students. Moheramid's at 287 students. The middle school is at 628 students, and the high school is at 870 students. The surprise this year as we opened was the high school. We ended up with about 30 more children than we anticipated. None of our projections would have counted for those 30 youngsters. They came from Singapore, they came from Ottawa, they came from Florida, they came from the Midwest. It was really kind of an interesting dynamic. And then the other thing that was interesting about it is the number of children who moved in who were seniors, which is really unusual. You don't normally see families move in the child senior year. So there were a number of them that were seniors. So I'm pretty pleased with the number of students. It's almost identical to last October 1st. Right now, when we opened, it was 2112, and last year at this time was 2111. So the children are returning en masse. The other piece of information I wanted to share with you, unless you had any questions on enrollment, did you have any questions on that? Is just the district's mitigation plan as it relates to COVID. So tomorrow, we actually will have, we'll begin our participation in the SAS program, and we hitched horses to UNH. And we are actually testing any child on a weekly basis that the parents want us to test. So we'll have a vehicle here at Masway. Stewart Ambulance is actually the partner with UNH. So on Wednesday, there'll be an ambulance here at school, and any parent who wants their child tested can have their child tested tomorrow's at the middle school in Masway. Wednesday's Masway and the high school. So I'm super pleased by that, because it's going to be a great anxiety reliever for parents. As part of our mitigation plan this year, starting next Monday, we'll also be testing adults. So if an adult is not feeling good in the school system, and they feel like they're under the weather, we can give them a COVID plan, a COVID test right onsite. So that will be new to our mitigation plan. And in terms of the district, we are all masked up, little ones to big ones, and our students are doing great with it. Our adults are masked up as well. So regardless of whether vaccinated or unvaccinated is immaterial, everybody's wearing a mask, and it's going extremely well. We're still doing three-foot distancing in the classrooms, six foot in the cafeteria. Makes it a struggle here, of course, in the elementary school, because we just don't have that kind of space. But we're making the space in the gym. So the gym, the PE program is impacted by the mitigation plan. So it's a pretty comprehensive and multi-layered plan that we are very proud of. And the parents this year have been far more cooperative. We have the kids in school, and the, wearing the mask is a small price to keep everybody in school. So it's been a good opening to the school year. Staffing-wise, we're struggling. We're struggling with bus drivers. We normally have 31 bus routes throughout the district. Right now, we're doing the district with 21. And if you're a parent, you probably have realized that we've separated the bus routes for the first time. So what we normally do is what we call a K through 12 run. And this year, it's a very distinct, we're doing a 5 through 12 run early, followed by a K through 4 run for both of the elementary schools. Same thing in the afternoon. It lengthens to day, but it does allow us to pick up the kids and get them home. The price we're paying is our lesser ability to do field trips and sports trips and those kinds of things. So the priority was the kids to and from school, pick them up, bring them home. And then, as we increase in drivers, we'll do more of the traditional field trips and sports trips. So right now, in case anybody's listening, or if anybody knows anybody, we're paying $24 an hour to drive our buses, and that comes with a health plan. So if you know of anybody, part-time, we'll take part-time as well as full-time, because we can use part-time people too, who's interested in a bus driving job. The need is now. The other area that we're struggling with employees making sure that we have what we need is in the para area, para educators, or support teachers, if you will. And we're down 10 there, and that makes it hard for us to deliver all the programming that we're required to deliver, in particular in the special education area. So again, if you know of anyone who's looking for a job in the school system, please let them know. Both drivers and paras are, we have a real need there. That would probably be what I wanted to share tonight, and I'd be more than glad to answer any of your questions.
Dr. Morse, if I have somebody who's interested in being a bus driver, and I don't have a CDL B, it's my understanding also that you'll help them get, attain that certification?
Absolutely. We do all the training. It's about a two-month process. It's kind of aggravating, but it's, it's a federal government guideline that we're meeting, but we do all of our own training.
Just so, if somebody is interested, but they don't have that, they can get it through you guys.
Absolutely.
I think there's a physical involvement, too, isn't there, for a CDL?
Yeah, you have to test it. Right, Dr. Morse?
Yeah.
You can get called for testing.
Anytime, yeah. It's a random testing process, so, you know, they gather all their names, and they just pull them out randomly, and you have to show and do your test, and then come back to work, hopefully, meaning that they were negative.
Thank you very much.
See you, please. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
So you'll be back later to talk numbers?
Yes.
That's the only interest I did.
I know, but I'm going to take your napkins away.
We can write on our hand, too.
I can tell you right now that, based on the information I have, we're around, when we talked last spring, we were at about $2. It's down to about $1.60. And so, as soon as we get the appraised value of the town, it should push it down a little further, so.
Okay.
So we're heading in the right direction.
Yeah. And we just did our reevaluation, and we're at about 739 with utilities, 739 million.
Yeah.
It went up significantly, it's like 56% it went up, so.
Holy moly.
We also have some buildings that are in definite need of love and attention, so we're hoping to make sure we have some funds.
Yeah, I mean, of course, the real estate market is through the roof right now, and it's driving values up, big time, you know? Makes it hard for families to move into the district.
Sure.
All right?
Thank you, sir.
I'll make sure you guys get a memo as soon as I have those ahead of the tax rate. I'll get it right to you, so you'll have it right away.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Gentlemen.
Scott Nemeth, Fire Chief.
I have quite a few things tonight, and I'm sorry about that, but it's the way it worked out. The first thing I'd like to talk about is I know that there's ARPA funding to use towards projects. And one of the projects that I've wanted to do for a long time is a vehicle exhaust regal system. It's something that we've looked into in the past. It's about $70,000 to do the full system. What it is, it's an outdoor fan blower system, and they run tubes off of that. We put it all up into the ceiling, it has a drop-down tube that we plug right into our exhaust pipe. So whenever we start the trucks, which is the worst time for the emissions out of the truck, it goes right through the tube out of the building and away from everything. Currently, some of the trucks, when we start them, you know, it's shooting smoke out into the bays, it gets into our gear, it gets into some of the equipment. So I just like to make the area safer for the firefighters. You know, cancer is definitely a concern in the fire service. And when they built the building, I think they looked at it, but it was too much money. So what we do have is a fan on the far end of the building, the CO meter. In my 17 years here, I've never seen the meter actually turn on the fan due to the smoke. Most of the time, we have it running all the time, just to get the airflow through the building and such. You know, in the hot days, there's not an AC out in that, and it gets pretty, pretty hot out there, so we'll usually have it running. But that's just something, I know that the board's been talking about the funding and ways to spend it, and I just wanted to bring it to the board to see if that's something that I could look into further or not.
I'd say look into it. I think it should be added to the financial planning tool thing and be considered with everything else that we have to.
Yeah, I agree.
So, yeah. So you can get some quotes in terms of how much that would cost. I'm not sure if the $75,000 is the Scott and I quote, or if that's, you know, you've got hard numbers from somebody for that system.
Well, just because of the cost, I think we have to do a RFP for this, so I can work with Denise, and we can put this out to bid.
Okay, all right.
See what we get from it.
I just want to consider with everything else that we've got, too, so.
Well, we also have, we also have another system that we've talked about off and on, and that's a fire suppression system. Are you also going to be looking into that around the same time?
I haven't right now, just because of the potential cost of everything. And then, for our building, we don't have a water source, we'd have to do a system. It's something that I could definitely could look into. I know a previous chief did look into it, so I'd have to do some digging in my paperwork and see what we have on file that would give me a better head start. And maybe it's not something that we have to do a full bid and go through the building again with everybody. I might have some of that information in my office currently, so I can definitely look at that.
Well, for the open bay, for the open bay area, I would appreciate it if you also look into a phone system, which is, which is really a much better fire suppression system than the water system.
I could look into it, gentlemen. I have some concerns, but I'm open to look at that, so.
The fan you said is dropped off. Isn't that way up high? So the carbon dioxide, I would have to get to a pretty high level to actually pick that up. Do we have a way to find out what it is down where you guys are?
I mean, I could run some tests. We do have a lot of meters.
Yeah.
They give us real-time information, so we could start the trucks up and have meters in different areas and see what levels we have. The fan currently is probably seven feet off the ground.
Okay, so it's not, I was thinking it was a big one.
No.
Great.
So the next one, I have a couple things on this one. Some of it is just housekeeping. I'm asking the board to see if we can move our full-time lieutenant wage into the full-time firefighter wage line. Currently, we don't have any full-time lieutenants. The money's there. It's kind of housekeeping, just to put, put with the full-time firefighters. The next one is to do, potentially, I mean, not potentially, I'd like to move everybody to the 24-hour shift, so we discussed this before. By doing that, there's going to be no more nighttime shift incentive, so I'd like to do the same with that, combining the nighttime shift incentive line into the part-time firefighter wage line, just moving the money towards that. So the whole goal for me has always been to have 24/7 coverage, staff coverage here. It cuts down our response time, it helps me with scheduling. The on-call firefighters are great, and I love them, and we definitely need them, but it's definitely hard right now with everybody's work schedule, family schedule, to really know who we're going to have around. By switching to the 24s, you know, that's been some of the concerns with some of the members that have left and gone to other departments. They've left because of that 24-hour schedule. So to move the 24-hour schedule and looking at the nighttime incentive, recently, we're not getting the coverage anymore. We've had a couple people move out of town. They're still part of the department, and they've just been doing some part-time shifts for us on the weekends. So I'd like to take the nighttime shift incentive instead, use that towards the part-time firefighters covering it. So it'd be one full-time firefighter working with one part-time firefighter seven days a week. To do this, some of the concerns I had was the personnel policy. The personnel policy is set up, so it's for an employee doing 40 hours a week, working eight-hour shifts. There's some language in there that I wanted to look at. And also, the bigger concern is FLSA. There's a 7K exemption when it comes to firefighters, which talks about the overtime, and at what, what point do we have to pay firefighters for overtime? I haven't looked too much into the FLSA, because we're growing as an apartment, and it really hasn't hit until now with the way we're going to do things. So I did a ton of research, I reached out to the town lawyer. I've been working with him for two months now on revising this personnel policy, and the big issue was the overtime. So what we came up with is, we'd like to change the work period to seven days, and then the full-time firefighters get overtime after 48 hours. FLSA says that we can have them work up to 53 hours before overtime. I'm trying to kind of keep it in what they have now for overtime. And John just quoted, and would be like, you're going to work more hours, and we'll figure out overtime later. So I'm trying to work out that. The work period can be different from the shift schedule. The shift schedule would be an eight-week cycle rotating through. So if on week one, they start on Monday, they won't work that Monday again for eight weeks, because they're going to be working 24 hours on, two days off, 24-hour shifts off, one day of 24-hour shift, and then they'll have four days off. That shift schedule is used by a lot of the full-time area departments around here. There's a couple that do one day on, one day off, one day on, five days off. But for our area, the one on, two off, one on, four off is more normal. So when I looked at that, when I looked at the area departments that are full-time, that's where I came up with some of the changes in the personnel policy. I don't know if everybody got a chance to look at it. I can go through every change that I made, if you'd like, or I can hit the bigger ones. So to you guys.
I have a couple other questions on, but whatever you guys want.
Okay. Do you want to hit the bigger ones, when we can ask questions about?
Sure. So like we discussed, just discussed the FLSA, so our work period would be seven days with overtime after 48 hours, and this shall constitute a 7K election with the FLSA.
Can I interrupt you as you go on? Because I'm a little confused here. It's seven days.
Yeah.
With X days off after 48 hours. The 48 hours is a straight run, or it's, how many, how many days does it take to get 48 hours? Two days, three days?
Two, 24 hours.
I can give you that. So this is broken down to our payroll week, week one. And then how many shifts are going to do, how many hours are going to work, and then that's the total for our pay period, because right now, we get paid bi-weekly. So in the first week, they'll work 96 hours total, and the next week, 72, and then 96, 72, so it's a rotation. So this is the FLSA. We can go from a seven-day, eight-day, nine-day, 14-day, 21, all the way to 28 days, and then that tells us when we have to pay them the overtime.
Okay, that's where I was interested, is when do they, when do they start getting overtime?
So because they're going to be normally working the 48 hours a week.
Yeah.
I am asking to do a seven-day work period, and then get paid overtime after the 48 hours. So there'll be two times in that eight-week cycle that they'll be working a 24-hour shift. So they'd have to work another 24-hour shift at regular rate before they get overtime, because overtime would be after 48 hours.
Okay.
What I've been struggling with, with the lawyer, and we've been going over back and forth, I guess, for two months, is that most area departments average 42 hours a week, and the overtime is, the overtime is written down so that it's any scheduled shift that's not their normal work schedule. So it's anything outside their normal days. I know that firefighter, like shift A is going to be working, I know what day they're going to work next year, because it's the same schedule, they just rotate around. And we can map out their schedule that far. So what other area departments do is they're just saying it's a 42-hour work week, you're going to get overtime, anything outside that. And we're kind of fighting back and forth on the regulations. And he's looking at it as the FLSA, which we're doing, but I'm just looking at other contracts and other personnel policies that do what I'd like to do. Because that's one of my concerns, is that those two 24-hour weeks, they have to work another shift at regular rate before they can even get close to the overtime rate.
Right.
But he's saying to stay within FLSA, we have to do the seven days and 48 hours. So that's what I want to know. It's a whole, I will tell you, I've been working on this for two months. I've reached out to bloggers that I know who are firefighters and lawyers that understand all this. I've emailed people, I've tried to get hold of NHMA, I've talked to our town lawyer, I've reached out to full-time firefighters elsewhere, I've reached out to unions to talk about this stuff. I mean, it's a big deal, and I want to make sure that the town's doing it correctly, and I want to make sure that the firefighters are getting what they should as well, so.
Just, it just, it strikes me as being a little complicated when I...
Oh, yeah. It's very difficult.
You've done a great job trying to untangle it and make it make sense now, thank you.
If you do have any questions, there's a great website that I found called firefighterovertime.org, and I actually reached out to the gentleman that runs the website. He has a ton of different articles. The problem is, every article's kind of close to what we're going to do, but it's not exactly what we're going to do. But I did reach out to him, and I talked to him for over an hour on the phone. He's not licensed lawyer to practice in New Hampshire, so he could only tell me his opinion and things that he's, you know, seen in the past, but he definitely helped me out, understanding a lot of the stuff, and reading the articles made me better understand the 7K exemption and FLSA, so it's a, it's a good website.
Okay. I'm sorry if you keep interrupting, but how about, are there any neighboring towns that are going this way? Or are we, in other words, is Durham going on this kind of...
So Durham's on another schedule, or the same schedule, sorry, different work period. That's, they average it out at 42. That's what I'm trying to get with the lawyer, I'm trying to talk to him and see how they do it. And there's a lot of area departments that he's saying that they're doing it the wrong way. So I'm trying to balance up the two and figure out what's right and what's wrong. You know, by the law, doing the seven-day work period, 48 hours, we're okay. That's from the town lawyer.
What we don't want to do is implement it and then have to change because of, you know, something. So we need to be sure we do our homework on this, because it's not, it's not easy.
I totally agree, and I've been, like I said, the two, last two months, I've been working on this, but I feel like we're in a, we're kind of having an issue right now with the nighttime coverage. I just did payroll today, and I didn't even have half the shifts covered. So I have, we have no coverage at night, and it's up to whoever just comes out. So what I would like to do is make the 24-hour schedule effective October 4th, and just get this ball rolling. I've talked to all the full-timers, we've had plenty of meetings, I've communicated everything with them. They're aware that this is what's going to happen. I've told the town lawyer, and I've told them that I'm going to continue talking, talking to other people to reach out to see if we can make that 42-hour and the overtime rate, if we can make that. But it's been a struggle to find the right person. A lot of the people that I talked to, that contract, that piece of the contract's been in there since the 70s. So anybody negotiating the contracts now knows that it's in there, they don't know why or how. It was the same thing, I had the issue with doing the shift swaps that we discussed at one point. Everybody I talked to was like, well, I know it's legal, because we do it, but I don't know why it's legal. Well, that took me and Denise a couple weeks to find out how we could, and we did find the law on it. But that's been kind of the struggle with all of this, is everybody, you know, the bigger departments have been doing it for so long that they don't know why they do it, they just do it. Some of the other things in the personnel policy is just like attendance when the firefighters call out. It's just kind of, it's more of our policy that the full-time firefighter calls the station, talks to the other full-time firefighters, so that we do have coverage. If I'm coming on to shift tomorrow morning, I have to call the full-time firefighters on shift and tell them that I won't be in because I'm sick. And then it's up to that full-time firefighter to either cover the shift or to find somebody else to work that shift. So we always have the full-time firefighter coverage, that's something that I wanted to continue. Overtime we talked about, the other bigger ones is that I'm looking at the firefighters working the 24-hour shifts, and like I said, our... And like I said, our personnel policy is set up for forty hours a week, eight-hour days. So what I would like to ask the board is that we look at the personal days, the vacation leave and the sick leave. And what I would like to propose is for the personal days, they get, the full-time firefighters get two twenty-four hour personal, two twenty-four hour shifts, which would be their personal days off. And then the vacation leave, because it's twenty-four hours and it's gonna take them so much longer to add up the hours for the vacation leave because they accrue it. Instead of the first year of employment at six point six, seven hours, started at eight hours for that first year. And then the sick leave, I'd like to ask the board to allow them to accrue a rate of twelve hours per month instead of the eight hours per month. But they would max out at five hundred and forty. The current max time for sick time for the other employees like myself with forty hours is six hundred and forty hours. So they need to accrue some of the hours a little bit faster than the rest of us. But on the long-term side of things, it would be the same as all of us. How does that look?
No, that makes sense though.
And looking at the personal days, the vacation and the sick, I looked at other full-time departments to see what they were doing. And it's the same.
It makes sense.
Questions? Anything have a motion to?
I have a problem with those last things that you covered because now we're treating our employees differently. And that's an issue for me. So I understand why you proposed this, but I'm not in favor of that at all. Because that's treating our employees differently. And I've never been a fan of that. So I understand why you're doing it, but I'm, I don't agree with that.
But if somebody has a day, if they're a twenty-four hour shift and they need the day off, it doesn't help. Like they're still, their days are just different, so. Which is the piece that you're?
Well, the person, let's take personal days for instance. So if I'm a regular employee, I get two personal days each calendar year, that's sixteen hours. He's proposing to give them twenty-four hours per year, that's more.
Got it, so you're saying that.
Yeah, and, and I have less of a problem with the sick leave in terms of starting it a little bit faster. But if we're gonna do it for the firefighters, we need to do it for everybody else. And the same thing in terms of, what's the other one, the vacation.
Vacation.
So I'm just not in favor of that. I think the board needs to talk about how that, you know, implicates, have implications. The other one is the grievance leave, you give people three days off. That's fine, that's twenty-four hours. But he wants to propose to give them two twenty-four hours, that's forty-eight hours. That's not fair. So that's what I have a problem with. So that's where I am.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll take it under discussion.
Is there anything that we can do right now? Because he did say that he needs to get that shift changed so that we can use our piece of it we can pass forward? Is there anything we can make sure that the coverage is happening?
Well, do those two things go together?
No, the biggest thing for me is that the board approves the seven-day work period and overtime after forty-eight.
I'm fine with that.
And then we'll just put a hold on the, on the work gap.
I think we're good there.
And in terms of the other thing, and this is my opinion, in terms of the other things that you're requesting, I, I hold you to the bottom line of your budget. If you wanna move things around, it's up to you. And in terms of moving budget lines, just keep the budget as it is and just charge where you need to charge. I'm personally not gonna hold you, if you know, if your full-time lieutenant's at zero.
Just stay within.
That's perfectly fine.
Just stay within the bottom line, just stay within the bottom line.
My thing is more just housekeeping to work with Joanne so that, because we don't have a full-time lieutenant. It was just a movement down to the full-time firefighter. So I can actually look at what we're spending on that full-time firefighter.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I completely understand where you're coming from, but for me, it's just, you know, we're gonna be negative whatever in one, but we're gonna have all this money in the other one. And I know bottom line, you know, I understand.
For me, I, that doesn't bother me.
Yeah.
That doesn't bother me. And in terms of, if your budget is five hundred thousand dollars and you spend four ninety-nine, I'm perfectly fine. If you go over, then I want an explanation of why you went over. But yeah, I'm perfectly fine with you going negative, personally.
Yeah, I agree with you as well.
I'd rather keep the budget the way it is because then when you go in next year, you're probably gonna ask for a lieutenant, maybe, I don't know. Okay? But then we can change it at that particular time. So I'm fine with it.
So.
Okay, so we have a motion, move to approve the use of ARPA funding to purchase a vehicle exhaust removal.
But that was, that was the old one.
I'm sorry?
That's the old one, move to the next.
That's the old one?
That's the previous.
Just really quickly, do we have a plan for when we can get back to the chief about, about these days? So we can tell people that work with us, how are we gonna, we get rid of date for time?
I think we need to discuss it because it has implications.
Right, so do we know when, where those cuts are, so that we can know when all that, right?
The one on the next page is relative to what he just discussed. It's not about the ARPA funding.
We're not doing ARPA, we're just gonna do this one and.
Aren't we doing the ARPA last?
Because you're taking that one under advisement. And then the third one is just gonna be modified.
Something modified?
To say the work period, to approve the work period of seven days and overtime over forty-eight, right?
Correct.
Still moved.
Still moved.
That is the thing. We just need a second.
Second.
Proportion passes.
Did you vote?
We just did.
I was on closer than the language that you said.
Okay.
We got a second.
Four, oh, okay, okay.
And I, yes, we voted, but I didn't remember voting, but that's okay. But I vote.
Oh, I thought you said.
Who seconded?
I seconded, okay.
Yeah.
We can vote again if that makes sense when that thing, no, that's good.
You said you had one more.
Neither one of the ones we just passed had the ARPA funding issue on.
Nope.
That was the first thing, we're not ready, we're not ready to pass it.
Not ready. Who's we?
We just decided as a group, I thought that he was going to look into more information before we pass that. Because we haven't finished the plan for the funding.
For the, for the vehicle exhaust removal system?
Because that, yes, because we only have two hundred and something thousand for the whole town. We have to decide where that fits in with that.
I'm just gonna get quotes.
Yeah.
Okay. Number three.
The last one. For you or those who don't know, I am a coach for Wisherabees Association for the hockey program. I'm also the coaching coordinator. So I would like to ask the board to allow Wisherabees Association to use the meeting room downstairs on September twenty-eighth, seven to nine, so that we can have our coaches meeting. We're bringing in USA Hockey to do a big program. We need the space. I talked to Macklowe, we don't really have the space at their facility, so I was wondering if we could use it.
Is there any reason?
Insurance?
It's coming.
Me and Denise have been working with that all weekend.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it as long as you get the insurance endorsement, that's fine.
I agree.
So yes.
Mr. Grandley.
Okay. Thank you. Down, Doug.
Finally. You don't want to introduce me? So I'm here to give an update to everybody on the fair. I'm gonna speak to the fair and Eric can answer any questions while the dinner. So as you know, we came to the board and asked permission twice for the, for the fair, no restrictions. The fair itself was scaled down, as you know, from COVID. The place was packed with people. Great turnout for the fireworks, huge turnout for the dinner. Excellent, excellent day. Tomorrow, the fair committee meets to debrief and then we'll discuss next year. Our hope next year is we can get pretty much back to the way it was. But as a group discussing, this has not been brought to the fair committee. And I am bringing this up to this board. And if this board agrees with the concept, I will continue further investigation. But it was discussed through the, through the fair event and the cooking. A lot of the work for the dinner is done at the Grange and then we lug everything down to the park. And it was mentioned that it would be nice to have a permanent building. And then it was mentioned to me that Forest River Youth Association would also be interested possibly in paying for some, if not all of the building. So I reached out to several people in town to get, if I had their support, I would continue to fight the fight, so to say. So I reached out to the police, police chief, the fire chief, the chairman of the ad commission, ORYA, and the public works director. Miss anybody? And everybody was in general consensus that having a building would be so much easier to host events like the dinner. And ORYA would use it if not, you know, help pay for it, you know, that's nothing's etched in stone, if that was something we did. So if this board is in approval of the concept to build some type of, Peter Quaid suggested like a sixteen by twenty-four building, the location, nothing is etched in stone, nothing is, the thinking is to put it where the road goes in by the tennis court, by the pickleball court, be sixteen by twenty-four, sixteen by twenty-four long. It would not only provide a place to store all the food, because the biggest part, and Erica's gonna talk about the dinner, is storing all the food, bringing it down. Because traffic, the park is, it's a great park. That road is, it makes it difficult. It's very challenging when you're at a lot of people in there. If we had a place to store all that stuff, did you have a question?
Go ahead.
Like refrigerators, they could, we could make the stuff ahead of time, bring it in, and then we just serve it out of there. It would really simplify things.
Okay, so you answered half my question.
And it would be used as a windshield for the pickleball court, which apparently is a problem. The wind is a problem on the pickleball court.
Because, I mean, the largest activity at the Grange is the cooking of everything and then mixing the salads and so on. Would all that activity move down to the, the building or?
Eric can answer that, I, I don't know.
Yeah, well, he, I know, he's right there.
Yeah, he's gonna come talk. So if you guys are, are okay with the concept, I know nothing about price, just the concept, I will trench further, but if you guys are against it, I'll stop.
I'm fine with, as long as it's the building we're talking about. But it's the furnishings I'm more concerned about, you know, is it gonna include the furnishings? Or is that gonna stay at the Grange?
My hope is that I can get some, like the refrigerator downstairs, we got that donated. My hope is to get another one just like that donated. And things like that, I'm hoping to do it as least expensive as possible to get everybody on board that's gonna use it, iron it all out. But before I started, I, I just got the, if I didn't have the support of my fellow coworkers, I wasn't gonna fight the fight, because it's no fun.
Okay.
So.
So speak to me Karen about what's in this building, what is it?
What I visualize will be in this building will be a large refrigerator, a freezer, and some type of, it will depend on, the ovens will depend upon what's required by code. If it's gonna be a grill or if it's gonna be just two ovens, all of that will be depending upon what's required by code and cost. And who's gonna pay for it?
Running water?
I don't know. I reached out to Dorie Wigan, she's in charge of DES, and I are playing phone tag to find out if we have water, what's gonna be required for septic. I don't foresee that it would be tough to get a septic there, but I, I don't know. But she and I are playing phone tag. Madberry is just a holding tank, but that has, that's Madberry, not Lee, so I don't, we will have to do it correct.
Is the water down there potable or not?
It is, it is potable, but we would not market it as potable because we don't wanna be a, and worry about being a public water system or anything like that.
But would you use it in cooking though?
I'll have to find out from DES.
That's the same thing, so.
I will have to find out all of that information. I just, like I said, I just wanted to find out about the concept. And if you approve the concept, I'll take it to the next step. But if you guys say not interested, I'm done.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. It would be used how many times a year?
The town, so next, the rent commission at the last meeting has decided that next year we're not going to do the music in the park series. We're going to do, once a month, starting in June, we're gonna do family night. We're gonna have food, entertainment, live music, and lots of kids to do. So theoretically, we'll be used four times. We use once a month, June, July, August, and September by the rent commission for food. And the fair will use it, so that's fine. And then if, if ORYA as an example helps pay, they will use it for their events as well.
So what about if we were able to rent an R and D or something that we use those few times? I'm concerned only because I'm looking at so many buildings in our town that are in desperate need of repair and fixing. And I'm just wondering, is, if that's the issue, we would need to have a place, you need to have a building, you know, refrigerators, freezers, stoves, is that something we could do? Where you could rent something or? I'm just wondering about other ways, only because I, I just don't, I'm looking at the budget and thinking, how do we, how do we add a building when we can't, we haven't cared for any of the ones we have?
Great point. And then in my thinking too, the average age of the person working the dinner, there's, there's, thank God, there's not another Eric's Hotel. I mean, it's good, but it's bad, but. Eric, Eric has spent, spends like, I think it was eight days for that barbecue. That's a lot.
Yeah, it is.
And nobody else is gonna step up and do that. So if we had a place just to simplify it, the chances of it carrying on are greater.
Yeah.
But like I said, it's up, is a wagon or camper or RV or whatever possible, sure. Eric saw our food trailer for sale.
Yeah.
But.
And you pull it out, you know, when you need it and then, you know.
You would already have the appliances in it.
Exactly, yeah.
Right.
And then if you need it someplace else, because you had another festival or whatever, you have that option. Okay.
I'm gonna say in general.
Anybody? I'm on the fence. I'm not against it, but I'm not for it either, so.
You want me to do a little bit more work and then see, and come back?
Well, I think, I think the issue about the water is very important because they use a lot of water for washing the dishes, the pans, et cetera, et cetera. So there certainly needs to be a water, a water source. And.
Well, we have a well, so that's done. It's just what the, like I said, I didn't do any, I called Dorie, um, not Dorie, I'm sorry. Don Bucher at DES, we played phone tag. But that's as far as I've gone, other than speaking to fellow coworkers, because it.
Well, I think that we can, what we can do is just let you work on it a little bit more and get some more information. And then also look into the mobile, if you would, mobile kitchen, whatever.
Whatever, some other.
And, and see how that works, but, and then come back with your recommendation.
Okay. Do you guys have any comments or questions about the actual fair activity itself?
My, my comments on the fair is that it just went, I think, as perfect as a fair can, can do. The people had a lot of very positive comments about the venue. Certainly, you, you've got to, to look at all the help we had putting that together from the volunteers on up to Eric and his merry band and the fire department and everybody and the police department and so on. And everything just clicked, it just moved right along, the ice cream line moved right along. The bingo, I think, was very well attended.
Yeah.
I don't see how it could, I don't see how it could have gone any better.
Right, thank you. It's so nice to see people out and enjoying and being together and, and doing that safely, it was excellent, thank you so much.
Well, the other one, as you all know, fireworks was people everywhere, which is great.
Except for the limited cherry selection at the.
Do you wanna talk about the dinner?
Oh, I have some other.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
One thing, and it was great, I enjoyed it, except the lines were kind of long. You did get some suggestions, hopefully the committee will look at those. They talked about a vegetarian option or something like that. And I liked your idea in terms of the macaroni and cheese thing for the.
Eric's here to talk about the dinner, yeah.
All right. But in terms of logistics, could you guys also put something in the e-cryer and get people's, you know, like, what'd you like, do you have any suggestions, kind of getting some feedback? And the other thing, how did the nonprofit go in terms of the thing? Did they make some money, were they happy about it or?
The bingo, they did make money, but what they, they had never run bingo either. What they did was every game, the prize was fifty-fifty of what was paid for. So next year, they're going to look at giving pri, donated prizes instead of money as a prize. So instead of making a thousand dollars, they made five hundred because half of the money was given back.
Okay.
But they, it was great, they, they had a great time, great exposure.
Okay.
Yeah, and like I said to them when we talked that night, you know, it's our first time doing it.
Yeah.
So, you know, just gotta get the word out.
And also just thinking in terms of your e-cryer thing about, ask people if they're interested in volunteering. Cause you're starting up again. And the last comment I have is submit your expense things to the trustees so we can get this done by November. Don't let them wooze.
Tomorrow night.
That we know woozing this year, no woozing.
Almost done, we don't have many expenses this year, which is great.
Which is good.
Yeah, and Eric wants to address the dinner, perfect.
And we're, and we're glad that there's only one. And we're, and we're glad that there's only one Eric's Hotel.
Thank you all, um, and thanks to everybody who helped out. It took about thirty-two people to run that operation, just the dinner. So, it's not a small undertaking. Um, if you've got questions, suggestions, let me know now, so we can think about it.
Well, they had the, we already talked about the macaroni and cheese, the vegetarian option. What was the other thing I heard? Um, there was something else.
Was there somebody that was complaining because they didn't?
Oh, there was apples and onions, there was not anyone I got there, so.
Well, they sold a record number of tickets.
So, so let me give you the rundown here. Not knowing what to expect this year, um, we went pretty much by what we had two years ago. As far as numbers, I had made enough, just getting out on a limb, I had made enough food for about four hundred people. And, and that included twenty-five extra chickens from what we had before. Uh, we had a two-hundred-and-twenty-two pound pig plus forty pounds of pork butts, just to be on the safe side. Had more corn than I had originally ordered. Um, we fed three-hundred-and-ninety-five people. And at four, at four-thirty, Linda Reinhold was taking tickets. I don't know if you were.
I was taking tickets, yeah.
Um, and I think there was something like sixty-seven tickets that had been sold. So how do you know?
We were selling tickets like crazy, definitely.
We ran out, we ran out of chicken, we ran out of apples and onions, we ran out of five bean, seven bean salad, we ran out of tomato salad, we ran out of.
Pickles.
Pickles, we ran out of, we had one serving spoon left of baked beans from sixteen pounds of dried beans, which is a lot. Um, and we had about fifteen pounds of pork left.
I have to say, I went through after all the lines were done and everything was pretty much wrapped up, chicken without, and I had a plate full of food. It was amazing. So the fact that you, you know, made that happen is incredible.
Um, well, we lucked out, could've gone the other way. Would've been a lot of doggy bags.
We were nervous.
As far as the vegetarian option, I will say that we probably had four people ask if there was one. There was seven non-meat dishes there. If you couldn't make a meal out of those seven dishes, there's something wrong. So, um, it's billed as a pig roast and chicken barbecue, and those are the operative words. It's not an a la carte cafeteria, period. I had one person that wanted to buy two dollars' worth of, of potato salad and a ear of corn, and I said, no. You pay the ten dollars, you go through and you get what you want. Um, it is a fundraiser, we were the ad commission, because we do, we sort of have the attitude that we don't wanna ask for town money, pay our own way. Um, I think if you start opening the gates for a vegetarian option, we didn't have ethnic foods, we didn't have cultural foods, you know, we didn't have Indian food, we didn't have Caribbean food, we didn't have French food, we didn't have English food, we had Eastern European slaw. Where do you start? We didn't have any fish, so where do you cut it off? Um, and I, I guess I would make the suggestion then, if there's enough interest in it, that perhaps somebody like the Sustainability could, maybe could put on a cosmopolitan dinner with all kinds of different cultural and ethnic foods. That would be a lot of fun. I'm not gonna do it, but somebody else could do it. So the bottom line is, you know, ideas are great, but in order for them to work, somebody actually has to do something. And that's the tough part, same with the fair. I think with a small group of people that were, everybody did a fabulous show, so.
Well, that's my hope in terms of, and I know you guys put something in before, but, um, your volunteers are aging, and you need some fresh blood.
We did get some fresh blood this year.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we did, we got four new people that came and served dinner.
Yeah, I was gonna say. The youngest one was thirteen.
That's good, that's good.
She doesn't even live in Lee.
Well, that's even better. But I think that's part of the particular issue you're gonna have to deal with going forward, is because you guys keep doing this, great job every single year, but.
The problem is, it takes a lot of time to do it, and with younger people working.
Well, many hands make, you know.
Right, right.
So.
I just, even if you didn't, you don't have to change anything, why not just have a ticket that says vegetarian on it? Then that person can just get the place, like, it just, for someone, just to feel like, oh, okay, I can grab a vegetarian. Does that matter?
Did you say you ate? Did you eat?
Yes, I ate, yeah.
Did you see anything that wouldn't have qualified as a vegetarian meal? Other than meat? I mean, there were people that didn't take meat?
Right, I, I understand, and I guess what I was trying to say is that I, I had people come to me, so they don't have a vegetarian option, like, oh, you don't have to eat the meat, you know, have it up. And, like, I just, it's just weird for me to hold a chicken or pig ticket, so, but literally, they were just, you know, I'm not even asking you to change anything, can you have, you know, one, you know, a ticket that offer that? If, if that's not an option, if something you're interested in, then that's your choice. I just was, that's what I was asking about.
Well, I guess maybe what we could do is put, sign up this, this is the menu. And, I mean, it's, you know.
Can you, can I ask?
I grew up in a household, and my wife grew up in a household, and our household is, is always two options for any meal, take it or leave it.
Okay.
Is there, and, and you can explain this, why do you have two different tickets? One for chicken, one for pork, can you just have a ticket?
Well, obviously have not been involved in this.
It is not a simple task.
People buy a pork ticket, and then, oh, that chicken looks really good, I wanna go over in that line instead.
Switch, right.
Well, I only have so many chickens, first of all, and when we reach that limit, we're not selling any more chicken tickets.
I see.
Then you know before you get there, you're not gonna get it.
So, we had a hundred-and-fifty-five chickens. So when I'd reach that limit, we're not selling any more chicken tickets.
I see.
And the hope is that you do a lot of pre-sale, so you know what to shop for. Not that that hap, ever happened, but it would be great. It would be fantastic.
The most we ever sold was two years ago, pre-sale, um, three years ago. And we sold seventy-five tickets by Friday night. And this year, I don't think we'd sold forty. Part of it is the weather, people just don't come, you know, until the last minute. Um, and you couldn't have picked a better day than maybe today.
Perfect, yeah.
Um, I, we really lucked out with that. There have been years when it's been nip and tuck, are we gonna get blasted or are we not gonna get blasted? We didn't put the tent up specifically, because it was gonna be a good day. And that's a major undertaking, is take that tent up, put that tent up, take it down. Um, so.
And we did have a huge feedback, that they liked the way we had it this year, they liked the table scattered everywhere, which is great, it's just gonna.
And it was, the, the problem with that whole thing, and, and we haven't addressed it, other than the fact that being scaled back without the daytime events, there's two problems with the daytime events. A is getting people to run them, B, um, having the vendors there, you know, the vendors always wanna be there and then they complain because they didn't make any money. So, okay, then have a craft day sometime, invite all the vendors.
And one of the problems that the select board asked us a couple of years ago to address at the next fair, was that no traffic in and out. Once the, so we really were trying to do, that was tough, because people wanna drive in and out. So if you have vendors, as an example, they, they have to stay, and they don't, I mean, the band, I told the band when they got there, you have to stay, and then they tried to sneak out when they were done at seven-thirty with hundreds of people around, and you, you can't, it's not, it's dangerous.
And this year, next year, the fireworks gonna have to come back this way, with the wood line.
Because they were up towards the woods.
So that's gonna push the safety line back into the field more.
Yep.
So if we have vendors, we just, we lose everything.
Can, can, one of the things I think, I don't remember how many years ago we talked about it, you know, when you're looking at a park like this, pavilions right in front of you, put in an access road along that side, can we look at that? Because I think that would solve part of our problem.
Yes.
We have to do a road.
It's only part of the problem if you have people between the road and the pavilion. My suggestion would be to rope that off, or put a permanent fence between the road and the pavilion, keep people out of there, from there over to the woods. Uh, and if, if we're gonna have the cooking area where we had it this time, instead of down by the pavilion, um, just keep people out of that whole quadrant over there, and make them come through the bridge area. Have someone stand there with a clicker, so we know how many people are coming in and out, and that will give us a better idea.
Can, can we ask the fair committee to look at that? If that's a better solution than.
That's already.
Yes, tomorrow night, yep.
Okay.
And Steve did mention the road.
Yep.
Yep, so if Steve, if we were to, so the road, putting that road in, Steve mentioned the other day, if we put the building in down there, because in thinking about that, a problem with having the trailer is you don't have any storage space for the big refrigerator, and that's huge. I mean, maybe comes a point in time that we don't do the ad dinner. I mean, that just, but anyway, he said, you know, we could do this and this and extend that road, but we can look into that. Because it's, unfortunately, that road, the way, the layout of the park, has some flaws.
Mm-hmm.
And you, you can rent temporary barricades too, if it's not something, you know, if you only need it for that one day and you don't wanna change the layout, you can rent the, the temporary barriers for just that day. Well, you're gonna do a caution tape down, you know, fire, police line tape. Yeah, and people walk through that, and grips, but.
They should have cars out there.
I've got the technology to electrify that.
You shouldn't have cars out there on a, on a, I don't think on a sporting day, you should have people driving out there either.
Right.
There's no rea, people can walk. Dangerous.
As a group, can take a look and see if we can come up with some solution to that?
We haven't met yet, so tomorrow night's our first meeting, so they have a, you know, we're gonna debrief and discuss what we liked and thought we should do for next year, and, you know, what events we wanna add back for next year.
I will say, I had a lot of comments, and I'm sure everybody's had comments, this is the best fireworks we've seen in a long time. And I, I would ask the fair committee or the select board to write a letter to the hatless and say, here's our feedback, we thought it was great.
Yeah.
It was great.
Yeah, they did a good job.
Twenty-six minutes?
Can we get it at the same price for next year?
Yes, already did.
Oh, okay.
Now we just need to.
You don't have any money yet.
I know, now we just need to get in the budget.
Okay, all right.
Fair enough. Um, and just to give you a, to finish the rundown on the dinner, we kept the price the same way it was. I scrambled a little bit to try to get some of the stuff donated. Um, and had to search around for the best price on a lot of stuff, but we brought in thirty, uh, thirty-three-hundred-and-sixty dollars. And probably our expenses would be less than two, I hope, way less than two. Uh, we still have a couple of things, like, we donate some money to the Grange, we haven't decided, we have a meeting next week to decide about that, but, um, I think we did all right. And, and I think it makes a difference keeping the price down.
Yep.
Um, the church, you know, had their three chicken barbecues, and the first one, they sold out in a half an hour, the second one, they raised the price, and didn't sell it, but I think that partly that was in the middle of July when people were starting to leave Dodge. And then the third one, um, they scaled it back a little bit, but again, I think it was because people weren't here in August. So, price does make a difference, and, and our attitude has been, let's make it a community event that is affordable to people, and people can have a good time.
Yeah. I think they particularly needed this particular event, just for them to see people they hadn't seen for a while and have chats and.
It was amazing.
Well, I adopted a cab and favor reliever early on, and I think it, I think it was that for a lot of people.
Yeah, yeah.
I know this is completely out of luck field, but a lot of people didn't have enough cash, and they, like, were trying to figure out how to make that work. Is there any chance anyone down there could look into a Venmo or PayPal option as a way somebody could, um, with their phone, pay for meals, and it comes up instantly in your account?
No.
Just let them think about it, okay? So much flexibility, thanks.
You should be prepared to bring ten bucks with you and pay for the meal, and I can, I'll put out there cash only if we have to.
Well, and for Venmo, they work for, I have Venmo personally.
Right.
But businesses have to pay a percentage for Venmo.
But a nonprofit?
We're not a five-one-six-three.
We're not a five-one-six-three.
So wouldn't it be personally, you're just paying for your personal?
But who do you pay? You can't pay the ad commission.
Right.
Because they'd have to pay a fee on that, just like we can't.
We take checks, we take cash.
Yeah, I just.
No, I know, I personally covered somebody who didn't have any cash.
I, I so wanted to, and I had no cash to do that, and then one person really wanted a meal, and I just was so sad, and I would've come through.
You could lend them the money and have them pay you back.
But I'm saying I had no cash to do that, like, I could, Venmo did to somebody, but I had no cash on me. I don't, I don't, I just don't use cash.
Right, today, yeah.
Okay, we need, we need to move on.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, well.
Took longer than I did.
There's two of us, the fairies, what do you have?
Denise DeValle, you're up.
Uh, the Old Town Hall asbestos report came in. You all received that, yeah, in fact, it's.
Would you move your microphone down?
Did you get a chance to see the asbestos report?
Mm-hmm.
And lead?
Yeah, lots of lead.
Lots of lead?
The Old Town Hall asbestos report, did you see it? Did you see it?
Okay. Lots of lead.
So the, uh, actually, it's, the good news is, there's not very much asbestos at all in there. The bad news is, there's a lot of lead paint.
There's a lot of lead paint, yeah, on the lead.
Which we knew.
So.
So this was done because the board wanted to see what was going on in there before the library could use.
Right, and I, I don't know, uh, I don't know that we still have an answer, lead paint is lead paint is lead paint, whether they think the children can.
Children can't be in, in and around all those things, because they could get bored and.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly, and, and a lot of it, as, as it wears, it, it's dust, uh, you know, it has a lot of forms to it, so. I don't, I don't have an answer for the ones, I don't know.
The thing, because I perused it, I didn't read all sixty-nine pages of it, but, um, I don't know. If Denise, if you've read it, because we know outside, lead paint.
Uh, yeah, I'm trying.
Inside specifically, which rooms have the lead paint?
There's some balls and windows.
I didn't go that deep.
I did.
You didn't?
Yeah.
I thought it was mostly outside.
Inside and outside.
Outside, but I didn't.
I just remember reading, I, I know it said, was inside and outside, and then I have the, I can, I can pull it up, but.
Well, I think, for me, that would be if they can use it or not, is, outside, I'm okay with.
What were you gonna say?
But it's inside.
It looks like upstairs, here it should be.
I mean, it could say.
Lead paint on the second floor.
But how about on the first floor?
Right.
But you've got to get asbestos out, of course, first.
Yeah, thanks.
Well, it does me say, what, I guess I'm not sure, window well bath, which, where is that?
Yeah.
That should be on the outside, that should be the.
Outside.
Outside.
Yeah.
But I guess for that, I, I'd rather go through and just see what exactly it is. Outside, I'm okay, it's been there forever, but it's inside downstairs, and that's the part that I didn't delve deep enough in to find out.
And if it's not flaking, it's, should be okay.
It says, uh, let's see, all exterior, all exterior and exterior paint should be treated as lead-based paint unless sampled and denoted, which they do that in the, in the report.
Yeah.
Uh, they give you a table of lead paint chip sampling results based on, uh, all of the exterior uh, and the interior rooms.
And certainly for, where a lot of it exists right now is up in the soffits and so on and so forth, where it hasn't gotten a lot of wear and tear, you know, it's just sitting there. But it's not gonna be, when you look at asbestos, except for a nine-by-nine floor tile, there was no asbestos.
And that's in the clerk's office.
Huh?
That's in the clerk's office.
Yeah.
So...
Didn't the quote say that there would be about fifty-five thousand dollars to fix all of it, to remediate all of it?
Yeah.
Was that right? So that's our reasonable...
Ten to fifty or something.
He wrote ten to fifty.
Yeah, so there's a very reasonable amount to take care and mitigate those issues. If that would make it then usable.
So I don't think we're in a position to pass.
Alright, it's that one.
I don't think so, I would want to, I did not have time to go and look at every single page of that, so I would want to see in terms of what it is downstairs, if that's the part they want to use, so...
But we can say what's not down there is asbestos.
Yeah.
But the rest of it is still gonna have a lead paint issue, it looks like, through it.
I don't see lead paint on the first floor, but anyone else read it?
I didn't see it.
On the first floor?
No.
Well, you didn't see any lead paint on the first floor?
No.
I've been looking at the pictures I thought I...
Can, yeah, I'm gonna delegate, and she's gonna hate this, but can we have our health officer and/or building inspector take a look at the report and give us their expert opinion in terms of what the issue is or issues? She's saying yes?
Yes, yes, yeah, Mr. Tappin has a, wants to talk.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Tappin, with that please.
Okay.
Did you read the last line on page four under asbestos laboratory analytical method?
I'm not sure, I scanned.
It says that polarized light microscopy is not consistently reliable in detecting asbestos in floor tiles.
Okay.
So where you have a negative, it recommends that you do an additional test.
Okay. But that, is that still on the tiles or on everything?
That's on, that would be on the negative on the entryway tiles. What tiles?
You're saying that they're not sure that there's asbestos, they, it could be, so, okay.
You're down there underneath the results, is that where you're looking at?
Page four.
Right above the results.
Yeah, there's, under the results.
Just above it.
Just above it.
The old floor tiles?
Are the tile tiles or...
Well, just to open. Says the results analysis, the samples taken, and talk about a floor tile in the town clerk's office contains asbestos. The results also show some of the interior and exterior paints contain lead.
Right. He was looking right above the results.
I'm looking right underneath where it says.
Yeah, right above it, looked right above it. John read that line, polarized light.
Yeah, it says it's not consistently reliable in detecting asbestos in floor tiles. So they ask you to do further microscopy for the, for the floor tile samples.
And is your concern with, for the, for them to go in, to walk across, to get to the other?
Well, it's why I asked if they can give us their opinions.
Because we walked around, crossed it for eight years and...
That's what's wrong with us.
Why can't you just seal it? Or remove it?
Right.
Well, if you remove it.
Yeah, there might be a way, just spray coating it with something, I don't know.
Is that not the area that got wet? Is that the middle area?
I'm not sure.
The town clerk's office itself got wet.
Okay, but not the whole wing, the whole wing got wet?
But it came in from, it didn't get as wet as the town clerk's.
Okay.
Well, I think the other question is, how much money do you want to put into just a band-aid? I mean, what are we gonna do to the building? You know, for, if you would, it's completely refurbished.
Well, if the health officer, we take a look and see what she thinks. If she thinks there's no risk to children going in and out using that particular thing, that's fine. You can also check with Mr. Damaris and see his thoughts in terms of somebody accessing the building and using the downstairs building. I would not allow them upstairs, so...
So as far as the invoice goes, the nine-hundred and fifty...
You should be able to pay him the nine-fifty dollar?
Yes. Where would you like that money to come from?
Office manager.
Doesn't that be something they...
I think it should come from the good days.
Contingency, that's right.
Yeah, there you go.
Unintensive expense.
There you go. Great.
You first got a lot?
Need a motion for that? No?
Got the contingency bond, it's under that?
No.
No? Okay.
I think general consensus will charge it to the county board.
Yep.
Perfect.
Well, no.
The next thing is, the office manager or, as the study might say, assistant?
Oh!
I'm not sure. This is where she, she took my job descriptions and meshed them together. Took the job, MRI took the job descriptions and meshed them together, and I'm not sure if office manager is where she's gonna land, but the job description that I put in is just a draft I put together so that she would have something to go through, go by as far as what I have, what I do now. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, any comment? No? Okay.
It just came today, I didn't see it until...
The, the office, that was in the agenda from...
I didn't get a chance to see it until today, so...
Oh, you didn't get it on Friday?
Yeah, I did, but...
Oh!
I have a personal life.
Okay.
So things that, in my personal life...
Really? Can I get one of those?
It takes time, so, no, I didn't get a chance to read that particular thing.
Okay. We can just do it, it's not... I did, however, send it to her as a draft, just let her have something in her work. The next two items, I would like to have them moved into non-public to discuss under, I was saying ninety-one A, under L, because I have recommendations from the town attorney for both, on both of those items, and I'd like to discuss in there.
So that's C and D?
That's C and D you're talking about?
C and D, yeah. And then the MRI classification, E, I did send that out, that didn't go out till today. I didn't get it till today. And it's still in draft form. I'm not sure if anyone, I showed it to you, but I'm not sure if you had a chance to see it.
Okay, is, are we gonna get something more than this? Because the thing that I'm missing is, okay, she's got, or they have numbers from these different towns, but, like, for instance, I'm just picking the top one, finance officer, and they've got rates for all those particular towns, but I don't know if the finance officer and Lee's been here for twenty years or they just hired him last week.
Right.
So, for me, there's longevity issue here, so they've got a big range from Epping at eighty-one thousand to Lee at fifty-six thousand, so is the Epping person been there for twenty years or have they been there, you know, two weeks?
I can ask about, length of time is calculated into this?
Yeah, in terms of this, I would think they would have that information, but I'm, I'm not sure if this is just, because we asked for preliminary, is there other things coming besides that?
Part of the problem is how they're all one eaches, you know, it's not like they have a salary.
Yeah.
I did not see, and I don't think Julie saw, the, how they collected the data or the questions they used in collecting the data. I can find out, I can ask for certain questions.
Okay.
To see what they have.
Just in terms of the time I spent just looking over this, that's the thing that I'm missing. So...
So you'd like to find out more about what they asked to put?
Yeah, in terms of if they have any longevity numbers, so like, finance officer and Lee, how long has, have they been there?
Okay.
Finance officer and Epping, how long have they been there? I'm just picking those two, but I would want to...
Or that might just be the salary for any finance, I mean, that's just their salary scale that they've established, they'll pay for the finance officers regardless, you know?
I'd want to know a little bit more.
Huh?
I would want to know a little bit.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, I think it's at least important to know whether it's a salary structure that they have with...
Yes.
At home.
Degree or whatever. Okay. Beautiful. Thanks for getting that together.
Let's see, C has been moved to non-public, we just talked about the salary survey, miscellaneous, who's she?
I almost said, I don't have any.
Okay.
You can send it, or do you still?
Yeah, still do.
Are we done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Number seven, then, make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented, can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call of vote, select one, vote B.
Yes.
Select person, Casper.
Yes.
Flitman Brown, yes, motion passes. Any miscellaneous unfinished? Ah, here we go. Oh, that's not too bad.
And then I press that as one. That's the whole thing, but you only need to sign one page.
There she goes, taking my space again.
Oh, gosh, I'm so sorry.
I'm very territorial.
I, I will make that number.
Don't go across this line here.
I hear you, and I, I want to respect that, I will work harder to...
I don't want change either, do you?
So hear you, but don't do it this time, do it next time, I'm just listening. Right, this is new, it's like a start fresh.
Knock yourself out, there'll be one.
My name's here, so...
Oh, yeah, yeah, don't sign with my name.
I don't know what that number is.
Don't want me to hear.
This is okay. That's okay, well done there. Make a motion to enter into non-public?
All right, Jimmy, yeah, can you do eight?
I'm sorry?
Can we do eight?
Eight miscellaneous.
Oh, eight miscellaneous, I asked for the miscellaneous unfinished business, that's what we just did, these.
Oh, well, I, I asked if Mr. Tappin can give us an update on the financial planning tool?
There we go.
Oh, if he wouldn't mind.
Was it on the agenda?
Nope, because it's miscellaneous.
I see.
There you go.
Okay, no, it's fine.
So, emails and PDFs that department heads could fill out were not sent out until September tenth, that was ten days ago. They were, there were twelve spreadsheets, there are six PDFs. They went out to the department heads and to commission chairs, except for the conservation commission, because theirs is so simple, there's no point in giving them a spreadsheet.
Oh.
But the fire chief got a PDF and two spreadsheets, library trustees, a PDF and two spreadsheets, public works director, PDF and four little spreadsheets, recreation commission, one of each, and the acting town administrator, one PDF and two spreadsheets. The spreadsheets are just the, the spreadsheets were just the user input, and then the PDF was a copy of that user input, but re-formatted so that they could print it out and make changes. And the instructions were, they could either send back spreadsheets to me, they could print the PDF, make changes with pencil or paper and scan it and send it back, or they could give the paper to Denise, and she would tell me it's here and come pick it up. And that's the story.
Right.
I gave them no instructions on when to complete it, that's your job. And...
So, when do the department heads think they can get that back to us? So we can move the process?
I, I didn't get one?
No.
Oh, no, there's, the police chief did not get one because there's no reserve fund or trust fund that relates to police.
Or, or me. Same for the...
Again, for the same reason.
Yep.
Yes, it's, it's not all department heads, it's just those ones I listed, fire chief, public works director, town administrator, and then the library trustees and the recreation commission.
Okay.
And the conservation commission, I did send the chair an email that explained what was going on, and that if she had any questions about it or wanted to make changes, but pointed out that right now, the only thing that's listed is a, a dummy sort of placeholder of a possible purchase.
So, of the people that did get them, when you think you can get them back to us, or back to John?
While also organizing the budget for the year.
Oh, I should say one other thing, maybe to reemphasize, I did point out they don't have to complete, especially in the case of like our public works director who has four spreadsheets, four different funds, with, I don't know, probably sixty, seventy line items, there's a lot of line items there. I pointed out that you don't have to have them all finished, as soon as one of them is finished, you can send it back.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
So...
Same for any of them.
When do we want them back? Because initially, we said we wanted to do the buildings first, so that would be a steep thing.
And that is the biggest, that has thirty-something line items. And all of them in the spreadsheet and also in the PDF, I left many lines for them to add extra, you know, items that aren't listed.
Yeah.
But that one is by far the biggest, that's a, that's a third of the whole thing.
So...
And also probably the most unknowns, most difficult to get information.
So how do we want to proceed? Do we want to just start with whichever ones come back first? I'm just trying to move the process forward, because this has to be done in concert with the budgetary process.
Yeah, there's no way to know what, what other things are, you don't know.
You have it on the ABC for what, November, to review it in November?
Yeah, but still, the board needs to go through the process as well, and that's a lot of work between now and December, whenever it was.
Could we pick a day for, I mean, there's, I don't know. I feel like that's a lot.
How, how difficult is it for them to, to fill this floor?
Depends on which person.
Yes, depends on which group.
Yeah, I mean, some of these are, have three or four line items on them, five line items, and some of them are, as you mentioned, like...
They just have to put in numbers based on, I mean, is that what?
Right.
I'm just trying to get a, you know, what data was...
So, so to pick one, fire ponds and cisterns, there's like five line items?
Yeah.
And maybe he wants to change dates, maybe he wants to add something else.
Okay, so it's more than just the, the funding part, there's...
Details.
It's, it's, what date do you expect, and what's the fiscal year that you expect the expense to be incurred? And how much is it expected to cost? And then what type of estimate do you have? Is this based on, just a guess, is it based on quotes and so forth? And, and I also did point out that this is a, this is a work in progress, the goal is continuous improvement.
Right.
So that should mean that there is no expectation that every one of these is, is, you know, has three quotes for everything, I mean, nothing like that.
Yeah.
And also that the emphasis should be on the most expensive and the soonest. So things that are expected to happen next year or the year after, it's much more important to nail those down, and also things that are very expensive, to nail those down before you get to the small things that are ten, ten years away.
But doesn't, some of that information already exist on the CIP form?
Not for the buildings.
I, yeah. For the town buildings, there's, like forty percent of the line items are right out of the CIP. There are line items in the CIP, and those were copied.
Yeah.
And many of the rest of the line items are things that came from the previous committee, and they were estimates from the previous committee, so those are entered in there. And then there's some others where I talked to Steve, and he gave me estimates. So essentially, everything that's listed has an estimate and a date of that estimate. There's very few where there's a, an assessment of what kind of estimate is it? Is this, is this a guess, is this, you know, the quality of the estimate?
So can we, can we figure out the date, and then if there's, somebody's having challenges or struggles, we can absolutely discuss with them.
So today's the 20th. So, how about if we say? October 13th, it's a Wednesday. Let's schedule a separate meeting just to come to this particular issue.
I agree.
That gives them three weeks, and whatever they've got, that's what they're asking.
Does that sound good to Chief?
Well, I guess I misunderstand how much it takes to fill this out. Yeah, that gives them a month from the time they've received it to fill the form out.
Yeah, and some of them are gonna need all that time.
Is that right?
Yeah. Steve's gonna be the one that's gonna have the hardest time.
He's already started working out, though, I know that.
But that gives them time?
Steve, Steve has more than half, the, the whole task, more than half of it falls to Steve.
Yeah.
But I do know he's been working on it.
So let's say the 13th, and we'll take whatever we've got at that time. That doesn't mean that they can stop looking, you know, if they've still got more to do.
Right, and things come up in that moment.
Yes, but I'd like to on the 13th, start with the buildings.
Does that make sense to everyone?
So what are you expecting to have to look at on the 13th?
I expect the new high-resolution projector to be utilized for displaying those particular spreadsheets.
So that he would know that sooner, so he can put it to his computer.
So, the spreadsheets that they received didn't have any of the functional part to it. I don't know if they were sent out to you, if you got copies of it?
I didn't see it, but...
But it was just the input cells. So when that comes back to me, then I put that into the financial planning tool, which is the tool that you look at to see what the implications are.
So how long do you need from the, before the 13th to have that information, so that you have enough time to, to input that?
If, if these were to start coming in within a week, you know, some of these were to start coming in within a week, and it was to progress sort of linearly, if I got the last of them a week before you want the presentation?
Mm-hmm, the sixth.
Yeah.
Great.
So...
Did we make that right?
But if they all come in on the sixth, and there's lots of questions, that's...
That's right.
Well, we'll go with what we have on the 13th, but let's say have them to John by the 6th of October.
And if you can get them in earlier, that would be incredibly helpful.
Yes, that was, that was a good segue.
Sooner the better.
Yes. And if they come in on the 7th, day or whatever, just do whatever you can do. If you don't have time, we'll just deal with what we've got.
There was also a third way that I listed in the email, a third way that they could do the input, which is just to make an appointment with me, and we would sit, have one of these projectors, and I would just type the information in from whatever their notes are.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
So what I'm envisioning on the 13th, that you'll be able to project the spreadsheet up there, and the three of us will have a conversation about those particular items, ask any questions in terms of numbers, aging, details in terms of that particular thing. And then we'll schedule more meetings for the, the other remaining parts later on. But I think we should do the, the building one, which is the biggest nut, on the 13th, and just move on from there.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. John.
So, the 13th, 13th of October?
The 13th.
Six o'clock?
Yeah, six o'clock on the 13th.
Six on the 13th, o'clock tomorrow.
Posted.
And we'll call it the financial planning tool coming out party.
Coming out party.
And for those department heads that don't have any items there, invite them as well to give your input if you want. But you don't have to, if you don't want to.
Yeah, wanna make a motion to enter into non-public session? New Hampshire RSA 91 hyphen A colon three, woman who will two, Perrin, small P, and B.
And L.
And L, yes, roll call vote required.
I'll second that motion.
Yes. First, can I get a second?
Yes, second.
Thank you. Selectman Bugby?
Yes.
Selectperson Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes.
But first...
I move to seal the minutes from the non-public session.
I second that.
All those in favors?
Aye, roll call vote, aye.
Aye, yeah.
Bugby, aye.
As per aye. Now we can do that.
Move to withdraw the award to suburban propane, is that what you want?
Both.
Huh?
Yep, do both.
Move to withdraw the award to suburban propane for the FY22 propane contract. Move to award the FY22 propane contract, it'd be a for sure.
I second that.
Is it one motion or two?
Uh, we, two together.
We do measures together, yes.
Okay. One, one withdraws, and one gives it back.
Okay. So, did you second it twice?
I did second, well, I can second it twice, sure, each part. I second each part.
Thank you.
Each one.
Roll call vote, Selectman Bugby?
Yes, yes.
Very good. Selectperson Casper?
Yes, yes.
Select Brown, yes, yes. There's no place to sign.
No, you don't have to sign that, but those who have to sign for Joanne, they won't go anywhere.
Yep.
Well, there's no place to sign on this, I'll give it back. Just, yes, yes.
Oh, who did the manifest? Did you look at the manifest?
I did.
Huh, what? Did you, you look at the manifest?
I did.
Yes.
It's on Friday.
So we're, we're getting paid this Friday, yay!
Oh my gosh, I still haven't found my check from last time.
What, you lost it?
I lost my first check.
Oh, no, don't tell Joanne.
I will, I figured I'd wait till the second payment, so that she could do it together.
I, I switched to direct deposit.
I, I did as well, I just, I, I was, had my family at a party, and I didn't want a check sitting out, so I put it in a safe place.
Yeah.
And it's possible that that was the recycling center pile, or...
You're like, what's his name, Marineris?
I don't know.
And he got stopped, they looked in his book compartment, and he had multiple checks from the Red Sox, six figures plus, that he'd not cashed.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
That is interesting, here, let you just go, oh, cool.
Oh, you missed one.
Oh, yeah. Do we need to sign this one?
All the other...
They don't have a sign here.
Where'd it come from?
Yes, you gotta sign all three spots, I think.
But it doesn't have a sign here, so...
Well, there's four.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joanne didn't put sign use on all of them?
You know what, there are three spots, are we not supposed to do the ones that don't have a sign here?
Sign all of them.
Okay, I'm just gonna sign them.
I don't know what Joanne was thinking.
Well, it's very possible we don't have to sign them all, and we're just being oversigning, but...
No.
I don't want it oversigning.
Okay, that's that one, but then you have to sign that one.
And then you have to sign all those.
And Denise, you got all my emails, right?
I just, do the other ones.
This additional thing that I forgot to ask you to do.
Yes.
How come Bugby didn't sign? Because I haven't got that one yet.
Because I haven't given it to you. These are out of order, Denise, do I, is there a way to fix that? Does it matter?
Yeah.
Just, sorry. Well, we had them in order, and then you had the signs.
Oh, no, it's okay.
And now they're in different piles.
That's okay.
So, we'll just get them all signed. Oh, look, there's numbered, I can put them back in numbered order.
That's okay, it really doesn't matter.
All right, Eric. You don't wanna be that person anymore.
Okay, try it again.
Thank you.
Do one more.
This is for you.
This is for you, this is for you.
And this one?
This one, I don't need to sign this letter, because we do it.
You're right.
No, but I'm gonna ask you to come in tomorrow, um, to sign it. To sign it, okay.
Okay, yeah, cool.
That's, I don't, you don't need that one anymore, so there's that. Who left? Huh? Is that the lady police officer?
Yep.
Here's the town, you want the town?
What? What is it?
Piece of, a piece of cake.
Sorry, we did this on the town administrator.
Yes.
Did you miss doing the manifest, Mr. Bugby?
Um, I feel out of touch on that.
I appreciate knowing so much more about what's going on because of it, and I know...
That is a positive for doing that.
But then, of course, everybody knows you're the one checking the manifest, and if you find something, it's on you. That's fun.
That's fun?
It adds to my popularity, that's growing every day.
Well, it's good for you to do it, so you learn about...
I do, I do.
Plus then you can catch all Denise's mistakes.
She's her back in order, Denise, I don't know if that matters, but...
Just kidding, Denise.
Denise doesn't make mistakes, I don't know what you're talking about.
She does, but we just don't find them.
That's, she's that good.
She's pretty.
I have an announcement to make, being a germ.
Wait, you, oh.
No, no, yes, 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 yes.
Just another reminder, and we need to talk about the next meeting day, which is October 4th, which is during the week that I'm gone on vacation. Unfortunately, it looks like it is going to happen. Not unfortunately, I should be happy to go on a vacation, but it's a little stressful. So, Monday, October 4th, y'all are gonna be okay by yourselves.
No, but, but who's gonna answer the phone?
Could Andy be here by now? No, he's gone then too, right? Andy's gone then too?
No, Andy's only gone for like Thursday and Friday.
It's possible he could come.
I'm hoping he starts before that, yes.
Yeah, it's possible.
Who, who, oh, Andy, yeah.
So, how about this?
Oh my God, we're talking about this.
Oh, I'm ugly.
I did bring it up here.
Andy stands for a hot, numeral, possible person, yes. Stand-in for random, so, thanks.
I think the term is cat out of the bag.
Yes!
So, it just in terms of that week, are you thinking in terms of postponing the board meeting?
I didn't know if you wanted to still have it, or if you wanted to have it.
What, what is hot on the agenda? Do we have to have that meeting?
We always have stuff on the agenda, but yeah.
Yeah, it's two weeks from now, so there's not much on there, except a couple little consent agenda items.
Could we do any of those items during the ABC meetings we're gonna go to?
Good.
It's up to you or the ABC, it's their meeting.
That sounds great to me.
Well, it's really a board meeting, so we meet on the 29th.
My 20th anniversary is on the 6th, I'm happy to not have something to do next year.
So how about those little things you've got? Let's do those on the 29th when we meet for the ABC meeting, and let's cancel the meeting on the 4th.
Look at that, happy anniversary.
The next ABC meeting's the 28th.
Uh, 28th, sorry, not the 29th, my apologies.
How are you gonna write this down?
ABC, we're gonna do...
Whatever that little things that you said that were hanging.
Did you hear you have a Monday out?
Hmm?
Did you hear you have a Monday out?
That's right, we did.
Look at that, no, the 4th now, that's exciting.
No, wait a minute.
We're just deciding we don't have to...
No, the 28th is a Monday, isn't it?
No, I'm saying we have...
28th is a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday?
The 4th will be out, because we're not gonna have a meeting on the 4th.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. And then we meet again on the 12th.
12th.
Which is the ABC meeting, I believe.
What?
So, just for this, we're canceling the meeting on the 4th, and those little things are on the 28th.
And the next board meeting is in 12th.
What's on the 4th?
The 8th.
Did you just say the 4th?
Well, we're canceling the board.
We're canceling the regular scheduled select board meeting.
Canceling the 4th.
So the next meeting we have is the 29th.
28th.
The 28th, that's an ABC meeting, is it not?
Yeah, and Denise has a few little things, and we'll do those at the same time.
So this work goes in on the 28th?
Yes.
Also, okay.
What time is the 20th one, just sign of it?
Six, six, I think.
I haven't entered these up to my head.
I think they're all at 6:00 PM.
Yeah, I think so.
And the next board meeting, just board meeting, is November, I mean, October 18th.
Yes.
Great.
And if we need to do something, the, I think it's the 12th, we do an ABC, we can do something if, something needs to be done. So that gives you that week off. So one, you don't have to prepare anything for the 4th.
Yes, which helps.
And then you can go on vacation and not even think about us. And just, where are you going on this?
She's gonna be smiling the whole time. Board, oh, Jesus. You are gonna be just fine, it's lots of air in Florida, just stay aside.
And don't near, go near the alleys, and you'll be good. Or the board constructors.
Or near any public, very crowded places.
Yes.
Or just pop a mask. All right.
Now we're okay.
That's it, now Mr. Brown can say his thing.
Okay.
I already said meeting adjourned.
Oh, we just renewed, so we're in adjourned meeting here.
Meeting adjourned, meeting adjourned, meeting adjourned.
There you go.